That's Riverside Rhapsody. Good barbecue.
Ready? Okay, we're live.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Welcome to the Town of Woodfin Planning Board of Adjustment Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd also like to ask that everyone attending this meeting, please place your phones on silent so we do not disrupt this meeting. And I will now like to take roll to certify the board quorum. Mr. Hanson. Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mr. Deroni.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Vehon.
Here.
Mr. Young. Mr. Hayes, present, here. That being said, has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda for tonight? And if so, we have any questions or concern about the agenda?
No, looks fine.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Minutes from, I'm sorry, the agenda is approved for tonight. How about the minutes from last month? Did everybody have a chance to take a look at that? Do we have any questions on that?
No.
Okay.
I actually didn't notice that there were links to the video, so, thank you.
And we got a motion second? Okay, all in favor approving last month's minutes?
Aye.
Approved. Public comment. I'm going to ask, do we have anybody signed up?
No, I don't think we have anybody signed up for public comment. No, sir, we did not.
Okay. So then we're going to close that portion for the public comment for that and move on to new business. So with that being said, I will turn this over to Ricky for our first conditional zoning modification.
Okay. So just as a reminder tonight, the mics, it's like the mics are weird. If you whisper, they hear you. If you try to talk, you have to talk at them. I know we had some people who made comments or couldn't hear. It was faint. And if there's a lot of background noise, it seems for some reason, perversely, it drowns you out. So if you are talking, try to look at the mic the best you can tonight. Because like you just alluded to, the, the video is the action minutes. So if we're doing like legislative items or administrative approval, Marie can kind of hit the highlights and hit like who makes motions and who votes zero seven to zero four. If you get quasi judicial, like an S U P or variance, Marie will do more detailed minutes. Cause it's evidentiary hearings, you'll see something a little bit more extensive during those cases. We don't have as many of those board of adjustment functions as lately. So it's a good point. That's why you see them abbreviated because we're able to just, she doesn't spend 12 hours transcribing like last month's meeting. So if that helps, just real quickly.
Good choice.
Yeah. That's something that changed while, like during COVID, during COVID, something to stay loud. So, thank goodness. Okay, so the first item tonight is Rocky River. If you look through the packet, we had actually seen this one about 15 months ago. It was earlier last year and it's off Reynolds Mountain Boulevard. The big thing tonight, you'll see it is there was one large building that was 120 units. The site plan proposal is to break that into actually three smaller buildings in the site. As we've talked before in the past, if we have a substantial modification to a CZ, that's something that I or Maria, the staff level cannot change because it's a substantial change. It has to come back before the planning board and town council for approval. And that's one of those things. So if you, we've had that discussion, like would we see this again? Yes. If it was just a small tweak or if they went from 120 to 118 units, I can approve it. So going down.
And there's no increase?
In this case, there's no additional units. It's still 120 to 120.
What's the difference there?
The site plan changing. And we'll get to that. I'll show it. And as a reminder, all units for this one is part of that condition that they agreed to. They're continuing. All units are affordable for families making 80% or less AMI. They're actually averaging close to 60%. Some units may be a little higher income, some a little bit lower, but that were, all units were affordable. Okay, so zoning map for orientation, the left-hand side, that is Weaverville Road, the intersection where, you know, Bojangles, Bellagio is right there, the lower left-hand corner of the interstate access. And then you see, you kind of come up to the center of the screen. A couple of years ago, we had approved a senior living residence facility. That's the CS2 CZ to the left. It's a little bit lighter color. And our subject properties to the kind of center right of the screen. It is already zoned CS2 CZ. Why CS2? CS2 allows for multifamily. Community shopping typically does not allow for multifamily. So we had rezoned the CS2. And you'll see there's some R10 kind of to the right. That is the existing affordable housing, mountain housing owns immediately to the right. Everything else in this area to this left or west is community shopping. Not to confuse you further, but we have the future land use map identifies a big portion of Reynolds Mountain Boulevard as a, a commercial use and/or higher intensity. There's actually an activity center centered along Reynolds Village, this portion of Weaverville Road. If you've looked at the future land use map. So it's basically identified this as an employment area, commercial activity center. You'll see more intense residential industri, excuse me, commercial and residential uses. So there's no change to the future land use map here. The aerial, you've seen this before. There was a previous effort to develop this project predating steep slope. Remember that? About 70, 75% of the site was graded at that time. The project failed, went dormant, what have you. There's some basically malfunctioning or almost say abandoned erosion control out there from the previous property owner. And with new permitting, this property owner will actually get a grading permit. So you can kind of see it's almost like a little bit of a racetrack. It is subject to steep slope. So kind of why, why are we here tonight? If you may recall, there was one single building through the middle of the site that was kind of working with the existing grade of the property. They're breaking the building from one large building with parking all the way around it to this configuration with three, three-story buildings built into the hillside with the parking kind of in between them. They also eliminated, eliminated one driveway entrance off Reynolds Mountain Boulevard. Is a, is a small, you know, commercial street for the town. As again, he's got a school, you've got other apartments, you've got a concrete care or nursing facility across the street. But it's not a through road. As far as parking goes, there is a requested modification to go from one-half parking spaces per unit is what's required to 1.4. If you look in staff report, that's 168 required versus 180. So 12 parking spots. I done a real quick count. I come up with somewhere around like 176 on the plan. So they're not very far off. I'm staff, you know, for personally, I'm in favor of letting the market kind of drive a little bit. And there's not a lot of potential for parking from this project to push out into a residential neighborhood, whether parking in front of people's homes or parking a half mile away and walking and causing congestion. In this case, it's all on their property and they couldn't park in the driveway. So they'd have to deal with it. It'd be single property manager can handle that. Did anybody get to look through the conditions on that one as far as modifications or conditions yet?
I was gonna ask.
Okay.
From, from the previous time, I, I couldn't find it. Was it, what was our, do we have any conditions on it when it came?
Yeah.
Fifteen months ago?
Yeah.
Okay, do you, do we have that to review?
Yeah, we do. I'll, I'll just talk.
Unless it's, unless it's not anything relevant. I just wondered what we had. Do you guys, I mean, I remember the property, but I can't remember if there was anything that we had.
There, there's not a lot of changes, but I'll, I'll bring them up here really quick.
I remember we approved it.
Yeah, and they're coming down in height. So that's a good thing.
Yeah. Right, which, Rick, it ended three buildings.
I remember correctly, this thing was to be built with grant money, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was.
Being backed by some kind of HUD type stuff.
Yeah, there's a lot of partners that play into affordable housing. You almost, you almost will never see a private entity without some sort of like subsidies from federal state level or tax financing to get that off the ground. It's always takes some public money or some sort of, if I can get this to go.
Yes, this is coming down to four stories. I don't know.
Okay.
Pretty good. It looks like it's all three stories now.
It's a four-three split. I just.
Oh, it still is?
It's still four-three split. The reason that we did it, it's just.
Well, can I just hold, just right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, okay.
We'll call you up.
And that'll be good. We'll, to catch that on the record. Just thanks.
Yeah, we got the elevations there too, if I can get this thing to scroll down. It does not like this PDF. So for the most part, actually, you know, or remember Deroni. So number one, two, three were all the same. Number four didn't change. We had the 100% units affordable for 30-year minimum. And as mentioned, 60%, addable 6% air media income. We had a condition where if they didn't get this awarded, we would initiate a rezoning. We would do a separate zoning compliance permit for each building. That's the same as for, same setbacks as before. Normally, CS actually doesn't have setbacks, but we added some. They, we worked with the developer.
This is what's from the previously approved? That's what the current one is?
This is the proposed current, but there's no change. As far as one through seven, there's no change there.
So the one question I did have, number four.
Uh huh.
Were we told before that this was like forever and ever going to be deed restricted? And I see this time it says 30 years. Was it?
It was, it was 30 years last time.
Oh, okay.
It was 30 years last time. And that's very typical because, you know, after 30 years, you get some age of building, they actually become at some point naturally a career affordable housing. And that's the point of the 30 years. That's usually when you have the most market rate pressure. And a lot of times what happens is that's about the term limit for affordable housing. And they usually need to be re, remodeled or rehab. A lot of times the affordable, the property owner owns these affordable units will go back and get additional funding, other tax products or other grants. And they'll just basically recycle again and do another, you know, 20 or 30-year agreement. I've seen it done in Asheville where they, you know, older apartments, they'll just keep getting this like rehab money and they'll extend their term out. Okay, let's see here. As far as average height, still the same average height as before. Access from Reynolds Mount Boulevard, I moved that from two to one. We still have the screening adjacent to the residential areas on the east and north. So they'd be actually screening a multifamily project to the east, the mountain housing.
The one that's existing, correct?
We'll get to the comments here in a minute. I'm sorry.
The pre-existing one you're talking about?
Pre-existing one immediately to the east or right on the screen. And as far as what we added, A was there. I, there was a request to increase the steep slope disturbance from 80 to 91%. So there is probably the biggest change is this 91% change in grading. Like I said previously, it would be about 70, 75% grading. And the need is with the reconfiguring of the buildings, there's, they're pushing a little bit more into those undisturbed areas that are at the very front of the property and on the east and west, which are kind of the margins of the mountain housing and the school. Now, they won't be building that area, but they just need to do a little extra grade in that area. North, and I go back to site plan, that tree area, the tree save area to the north, which is actually next to single family, that area will be maintained. So they're not grading where an area that abuts single family residential. As far as impervious area, there's no change in the percentage on percent wise. And then the parking, as I mentioned, 1.4 spaces, which is at 120 units is 168 required versus 180.
So in that previous drawing you had, you know, they had parking in the top center, we'll call it, between these buildings. Do they have land above that that could, is it practical to just go extend that one parking a little further so we would have, meet what we normally have required?
I, I think due to the slope of the property and how they're having to maneuver and avoiding more taller retaining walls.
Okay.
They're trying to.
Detrimental to.
Yeah, it'd be, you know, you start, retain walls are extremely expensive. It requires taller walls and larger scars to get that. And seeing as like the difference is the requirement is 1.4, 168, but when I counted, I counted about 176. So it was only about, honestly, about four off. It just provides a little bit of flex in there. And moving on down, no change to 13, no change to 14. 15 didn't change, 16 didn't change. And 17 didn't change, the 24 months validity.
What was the LED lighting one?
Our code is an older code and so it talks about high-pressure sodium and, and so we don't actually have LED in our lighting code. So as we go through the code rewrite, we'll get called up.
And right now it has to be called out as a variance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we just got this weird thing. So we just make it clear that they can use LED. And so really that was it. It, as far as the change, again, it was the parking and a little bit more grading. And then the, the layout of the site. And if I need to, if you want me to flip over so that I can bring up the older one if you'd like, the prior version.
No, that's fine. I was just curious.
Yep. All right, so let me toggle back over here to this. But in this case, let me get out of here. Yeah, so the prior, again, the prior version was a single building down the middle about this entire length with almost like a donut-shaped parking lot around it with exit to the north, to the upper right, exit to the lower right. As far as like zoning again, this is R10. This is R10. Actually, there's a single family in this area. I think it's Hillcrest. And so that tree save area is the, about nine, 10% of the lot that will not be disturbed. So these trees will be maintained. And then you have community shopping here, which is a school and a dental office. And then there is also residential in this area, but it's actually like an open space area. And then the nursing home in this bottom right. And then for its facades, yeah, as we've mentioned, so it's a four on a downhill facade. So it's about up to 60 feet tall on the downhill side. When you measure peak to grade and then about 40, it's not quite that. It's lower. It's about 30 some feet. It averages about 48 feet when you do up and down, high-low. Which is what was approved before. It was basically the same configuration with this retaining wall down the middle, holding the uphill side integrated into the building. But we'll have three buildings versus one margin. Yeah, all right. And I'll stop right there for a second.
That's a creative way to integrate the retaining wall requirement into the building.
Okay, yes, sir.
What are the benefits?
Can you lean forward? That way you can hear you on the microphone. This is getting loud.
The benefits of the three buildings as opposed to the one big building? What specifically is the advantage?
I'll probably have to get the applicant to explain that one. It was more to do with, I think, some grading and retaining walls. But I, that's in my brief conversation with the applicant. So we can bring them up.
And that one driveway and the, the panel wall with the grading?
We'll have to ask her. So we can get that as a question here in a minute. And then lastly, this was a previous picture. As you can see, there's, you know, this is by Reynolds Mount Boulevard. You see some trees up by the road. And then if you kind of go over, it's that big, kind of like I said, racetrack looking graded out area. I did walk up in there before. Mostly dirt and brambles. There's not been a lot of revegetation of the site at all, even naturally. I think they took most of the topsoil off. So it's pretty scarred up. And then I'll stop right there and see if you have any other questions or we can get the applicant up.
Okay, let's bring, bring the applicant up. Let's bring the applicant up then.
And I think we have one person from the public to speak.
You can please state your name and how you fit in this project for the record, please.
Sure. Andrea Gonzalez with Fitch Ireck. I'm the VP of Development.
I'm sorry.
Andrea Gonzalez with Fitch Ireck, and I'm the VP of Development.
Okay, you want to just give us a?
Do you, do you want me to lead with the question? So the original build when we actually got, or the design when we got into actually grading it, we, the, the grade was working against us because when you just, when you have that much flat surface, you have to have huge retaining walls on the outside with this kind of slope. So we were able to break it up and use the natural topography. And if you actually notice, we have one building kind of angled to help support and integrate those that, the retaining walls on, within the buildings. And that was already contemplated, that retaining wall. But one big massive building creates just more water runoff. It creates more just flat surface. And we were able to, I think creatively, be able to work within the confines of the steep slope. And the reason we eliminated the second entrance, if you've ever driven that road, right where we're proposing the entrance is on the lowest side, but then the grade really picks up and trying to tie in a, one that's not going to bottom out your car on the top end of that slope into that, that, that grade we couldn't change, it just wasn't working. So that's what, that was the, the decision-making there.
And it looks like from the, the map, the satellite view, that that's the existing leg to the racetrack, if you will.
It does appear that way.
Already sort of there, that that's where the driveway.
It's pretty overgrown. You can't see a curb cut, but that it does look like where they entered it over the existing curb. Yes.
Does that make sense?
Any other questions?
I had one. So on the, I guess that's the north side of the property that, that goes against the residential.
Yes.
There, the.
Where the tree save area is?
Yeah.
Yes.
So those, so those trees there, that'll remain ungraded?
Correct. Correct. The grading, and we're currently actually at 88%. We put 91 just because we're, it's in our best interest to get less grading just because of course, in tight sites like this, it actually works better for us. But all the grading that we're contemplating is in front of that area. Where it's pretty much, if you've ever seen it or driven up on top of it, it's pretty cleared at that point. And it looks like there's like a stockpile of dirt up on the front side of it. But yes.
When was the construction began on this site?
We, we are hoping this fall. We have full plans, full architectural plans, full civil plans, ready for submittal for approval. This was a piece of this because we've been working for the last six to eight months to get to this point. And that's where we had to make up some final tweaks and that's why we're here tonight. I'm sorry, we're working with the North Carolina Housing right now on all of that. And yes, we're, we just had to, the Buncombe County funds that we had committed just got extended through the end of the year because of some of the delays. Mostly with Helene, there was a lot of, we had to just kind of be in a holding pattern until everybody was up and running again for us to be able to, you know, do something that wasn't necessary, you know, post that storm.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ricky, if we have someone wants to speak about this, we'll. Thank you. Mr. Adams. If you please state your name and address for record, please.
Yes, I'm Dr. Steve Adams. I own the two lots directly west of this property in question. I'm glad to see somebody's doing something with this property. I, I like your, your plan. It's far better. Previous owner left you a disaster. He left me a disaster, never did what he promised to do. He didn't fix the damage to my property that he caused. So I'm left with an above $20,000 mess on my property to correct what he's, did not fix and what he damaged. And he promised to fix and didn't, didn't do that. So I, I want to be a good neighbor. I'm glad to see the plan of what you have. I, I think it looks like a, a good plan. I think it's much better than one building. The damage from the, to my property that was caused by the previous owner stopped up my underground storm drain system, which is still stopped up. And now my pavement, pavement in the parking lot is starting to collapse in the back. It's been a slow process. It's been many years, but it's only getting worse. So I have a, a real concern about where the storm drain water on the, probably the, the northern 60% of the property, where is it going to go? How is it going to get? I, I'm sure the, what used to be the church and now the school. Because that, it barely handles the water and a lot of it still runs over their parking lot instead of through the underground storm drain system. Whereas prior to the previous owner tearing up this property, something awful, that's what stopped up my storm drains, part of my storm drain system. And it's overrun the storm drain system of what used to be North Asheville Baptist Church, which is now the school that's there. That water, once it goes down hard, it goes all across their parking lot. And which can cause a real problem. So those are concerns that, that we have. So, and I'd like for the Woodfin Board to be aware of that and be really on top of that throughout this entire process.
Which, which property is yours on this?
I own the office building directly to the west.
Put it on that page there, Ricky.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, sorry.
That's fine. And one comment towards the stormwater management. Previously, the town did not have a stormwater management plan. The county did not have a stormwater management plan, correct, Ricky? In the past, we now have a stormwater management?
Yeah, for a while, the, the town had, you know, didn't have stormwater controls. And about, I'd say eight to 10 years ago, we got the county to administer it. But yes, you're correct. About a year and a half ago, we took it in-house. So any project like this project, we'll have to submit a stormwater plan to our stormwater administrator and he'll be looking at, ensure it meets the quantity and quality control and where it's outletting at. And so they should be changing where the discharge point is at. And so it's, now that the applicant is also aware of maybe some prior problems, I'm sure they'll probably, you know, be cognizant as they move through the development process.
Or the town is more on it now than anywhere a couple of years ago?
I'm sure, yeah. It was, it was a disaster before. I appreciate, because I know you all have been trying to upgrade the, you know, what y'all are dealing to, but what's been here in the past.
So are, are you 7556?
I'm 7556 and 7279. I own both of those.
Okay, thank you.
So anyhow, the water that previously during the construction, in which the construction of the buildings never even started on the experience projects, but the water was just put in a holding bin, which was not a holding pond. And, but every time it drained, it just overflowed anyway. And it would just run over the top. And then all of that flowed right down over my system and completely stopped up my system, which it had never been a problem in the past. And then it goes over the surface rather than underground system. And my system is still completely all stopped up in the upper section of it. So during the construction phases, where my biggest concern is, is where is that work going to go? So anyhow.
All right, thank you. It's brought to Ricky's attention. So Ricky will, will.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Traffic's the other concern I have.
Do you do a drainage system on 7556?
7556 is where the problem is. Yeah. Behind, on the north side of the building, runs across my parking lot in the back on the north side of my, my building. So yeah, part, is there going to be a red light? Is there a plan for a red light down at the end of the road? I know at certain times of day, it already gets backed up. Now we're going to add a lot more cars.
I don't.
Something, you plan?
Ask him when I'm.
Okay. Um, can I make this a formal request to take a very timely evaluation and removal of trees that are, could threaten my building now? There are dead trees up there that used to be beautiful live oaks that were promised they'd keep some and they didn't. They kept about two and three of them and then they undercut them and they all died anyway. There's a couple of live ones, but there are a couple that if they came down in a windstorm, they could damage my building. So I want to make that. If I can make a formal request to you tonight on public record, if that tree does come down, you know, that's being served to you. down, you know, that's being served to you as opposed to having, having attorney bring, bring you a letter?
Dr. Adams, I would suggest, you're only up here for a public comment. We really, as a board, typically do not answer or.
Okay.
Respond to your concerns. But I would suggest meeting with Ricky and his group.
Okay.
And afterwards, and make your feelings known with that.
Okay. Well, yeah, I know. And it doesn't, the planning board doesn't really have anything to do with that. It's just, just, I can, I'll, I'll have to get an attorney to write.
I would suggest you.
I don't, I don't think that's a, you can just let us know.
Yeah, this wouldn't be the venue to serve.
Okay.
They all about trees.
Okay.
You won't to contact her directly through the.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Um.
But I think if you contact her, you can speak with her out at the meeting. I'm sure they'll be glad to.
I noticed there's landscaping requirements to the north and the east side. Is there going to be anything, any landscape requirements to the west side of property?
Well, we'll go back to site plan, but you just ask some general questions and I'll, I'll, I'll respond to it. That way we don't, yeah, it's a valid, we're talking about screening between.
There'll be some landscaping.
West, uh, east side.
Mm-hmm.
West side, we, we can talk to them about that.
Yeah.
Is that all your questions? That's it?
Okay.
Now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like it.
So I'll, I'll just answer as far as like, like I said, as far as like the tree question, we'll, we'll redirect him to speak with the property owner directly because that's not, I said, that's like a civil matter. We don't get involved in that. And we'd encourage them to, if they need to serve, that would be served directly or communicated. I think the applicant so far has been willing to work with us. And I think she'd be willing to, you know, identify the trees prior to grading. They're going to do a lot of work in that area. As far as traffic goes, um, this one didn't reach the threshold of a TIA for traffic impact analysis. I know we have existing development in that area. The, this Realms Mount Boulevard is a town street, but the intersection at the bottom is a state maintained road or state highway, actually Wever Road. So it should be up to DOT if a stoplight would even be allowed or required. Additionally, it's very close to another stoplight for the off-ramp there at Bojangles, the Go Store It. And there is some spacing limitations, uh, between stoplights. So, uh, I know during, probably during the school hours, it probably is hard to get out at certain points. Uh, but I know the DOT is probably pretty protective of that north-south corridor because as you add stoplights, but we can check in with DOT to see if that's, uh, on their radar. We, we've sent the projects to them, even if it's not a TIA, just to make them aware of these projects as they come through. I know there is a cumulative effect at some point. Um, our threshold is , uh, 2,000 vehicles per day. The state's actually 3,000. So, but this one wouldn't even be close to that, 120 units. Um, so as far as that, as far as landscaping goes, um, generally speaking, the landscaping shown on the site plan is what will be produced, uh, would be required by us. It's more illustrative. As far as additional landscaping, I'm sure that they will install some extra. And if the next door neighbors interested in that, I can talk to them.
Well, so the way that it's written now, you have that.
Right now, what's on the plan is tree save to the north and the buffer area to the east side, which is the R10, and then the street trees on the south of the sidewalk. So.
So typically you wouldn't have.
There's not a hard, there's not a requirement on the west right now. There's not a requirement.
Because it's commercial, not residential.
Correct.
If it was residential, that would have been a different story.
Correct. If it'd been, yeah. And even with the recently adopted landscaping standards that we passed last month and actually got adopted by council two weeks ago, we still wouldn't require landscaping along that area anyway. So.
But we could. So I, I'm just wondering, we're, we're pushing the, um, the grading limits because of where the new building configuration lies. So it's kind of like a given. And we could, we could say, yes, do that, but add a buffer since you're coming, you know, further downhill, if it makes sense to add that as a condition.
So we'd be talking on the, the bottom of this picture where it says existing commercial.
That's right. So, so if we were to talk about trees, we'd want to speak with the applicant to see if they're willing to get some sort of landscaping on that west side because it has to be a, also agreeable by the applicant. If, but y'all could suggest that or ask if they'd be willing to do that.
Okay. Will the applicant be able to come back up again?
Yes.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Um, this is already an incredibly expensive build and your concerns are our concerns as well with the stormwater. It's a huge reason why we went through this redesign to lower the retaining walls to create, um, better storm runoff because you're correct, that little storm basin that was there existing when I walked the site is far inadequate. And I'm sorry that all of that happened for you.
Do you pick up, do some grading on that property for me?
Yeah, let's start trying to do the.
So I, right, right, right now, we have underground detention and we have all of that to be able to help facilitate that. And it's just, it really is driving the cost for this. It, you know, I would be hesitant to promise something that I can do without really running numbers on what that kind of substantial buffer that's required on the, um, east side to be duplicated on the, on the west side. And it's not in an, an attempt to not be agreeable or working with y'all. It's just with, with affordable housing, we, we do not get to just increase rents. So we are capped there and we cannot recapture any more costs, um, on the cost side.
I would just wonder if there, you know, I don't know storm, stormwater drainage systems. So I'm not claiming to be any expert or have any clue, but I would just think that there's, if there's a potential to say, well, trees and roots do a pretty good job at stopping water, but if that interferes with some.
I think I'm, I think I'm more speak, speaking to the cost of what's driving the cost because we are, we're tying in all the roof drains. We are trying to put that underneath that parking lot area so that we can capture everything on site. And so the site, the site work cost is very, very expensive. So to add more cost without really putting numbers to it to understand, you know, I, we want to be good neighbors. We want to be good citizens of, um, you know, I think it was alluded to earlier with Ricky. We are long-term owners. We will own this for 30-plus years. We've been in business for a very long time and our specialty is affordable housing. So we are not looking to make enemies because we're going to be here for a long time. So if we can do anything to help screen it, we can look at, screen at that, um, screen that side, we can look into it. But to make it a requirement right now without me having contemplated the price, I think wouldn't, wouldn't do well for, um, for our overall budget in keeping it affordable.
Okay.
Have you a bag of water?
We have not, uh, we have not submitted our plans yet. We are waiting for this.
You have?
We have water availability. We've submitted in regards to our tap and, like our tap, um, and how much we would accept, um, be pulling off.
Is that going to be from Woodfin or?
Asheville. Yes.
Any other questions for applicant?
No.
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Ricky?
Any other questions, discussions amongst ourselves, you know, concerns? Do we have concerns of?
Maybe. I mean, this is really, realistically, in my opinion, this is minor changes to what we already proved. And I think aesthetically, this would look a lot nicer than one giant block.
I like the changes.
I like that. Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. And so I would say staff, staff recommends because it is the breaking it up into three buildings seems like it would help get either one building online quicker. I suppose you don't have to wait for all the whole building at once. So having three would get some phase, people living up there. And it seems.
Actually, I do have one question.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess I should know this. Is part of the, the, the process going forward for the plans for this site, is part of that, um, a water, a, a stormwater?
Yeah.
Plan?
Yes.
So we don't have to put that in as a.
No, no, because.
That's mandatory.
Yes, mandatory. Yeah, it's mandatory. Yeah, it's mandatory. So that's a technical view. So we just don't require those. Those are extremely expensive to detail out. And it's an engineer. So we'll be looking at calculations and a design and cross-sections and, uh, inverts and things like that. So it's, so we, we know that's a requirement. Uh, just like we asked for like water allocations because if they can't get the water capacity from City of Asheville or Woodfin Water, then they don't have the fire, the, the ability to sprinkle the building. Or if they can't get the pressures up there for some reason, they can't build the building as proposed. So there's a lot of technical architectural engineering reviews are still waiting ahead of this project. This is just more like how this fits on the horizontal ground right at this point. That's really all we're doing.
I think if the water from Asheville is becoming down the mountain as opposed to Woodfin Water or that be pumped up, it'll be more expensive to pump it up than will be gravity fed down.
Yeah. Yeah. And so I think, yeah. And so as far as that, so the staff is recommending approval of the modification. And then of course, uh, if you're ready to close this, I said, close the public meeting, close the public hearing and then, uh, for a motion if you need one.
Okay. Yes, let's close this portion to the public at this point. And our normal motion maker is not here. Do I have a volunteer to?
I did it last time.
Does that mean you'll do it again? If that means, I, I.
I'll do this one.
Okay.
You can do the next one.
All right.
Okay. I move to approve the conditional zoning of 7.99 acres as shown in Exhibits A and E for the community shopping to conditional zone subject to the conditions identified in Exhibit D. We didn't have any. And find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan and meets the development needs of the community in that the request promotes a mix of housing types and affordability options by working with developers to incorporate income restricted housing into new developments, 1.1, 1.2, and 1.2.4. Promotes long-term fiscal responsibility by growth in areas with existing services, 1.2.6. Supports walkable employment centers so that residents may both live and work in Woodfin, 3.1.4. Second.
And let me just confirm because we do have conditions in Section D. We just did not change them.
Didn't change them.
Yeah. I just want to make clear.
And I didn't read all of them.
Yeah. Yeah. I just want to make sure that there are conditions.
Yeah, there are conditions. It's just by referencing that those are incorporated.
Okay. Let's pull the board. Uh, Mr. Valentine.
Approve.
Mr. Deroni.
Approve.
Mr. Hopkins.
Approve.
Mr. Vehong.
Approve.
Mr. Hayes, approved. Congratulations. Massively approved.
All right. And so this will get scheduled obviously to town council. Uh, normally that'll be like in six weeks. So it'll probably be mid-August, about the August 19th right now. All right. Thank you.
Uh, with that being said, let's move on to the next item, number two, conditional rezoning.
Okay. So we have another conditional rezoning, our second item of the night, should be our last. Uh, this is, uh, just under an acre that is, for way of reference, is across the street from Kirby. And so if you're on Brookdale North Woodfin, the, the street kind of changed its name. There's the recycling facility, Kirby, on the left. There's a railroad track. You have Grace Oil, uh, the Cracky Mountain Line Rail Depot on the right. And then immediately kind of to the south, southeast of that here and hatched is Three Puffin Lane. Puffin Lane is a private driveway. It's a gravel driveway. It's named for 911 purposes. It's not a town street, but, uh, the property is adjacent to, um, North Woodfin Avenue, which is actually a state maintained road, including the small bridge. It's kind of like pinches down and goes up to Weaver Road. So Weaver Road is the main north-south highway through town. And then you come down to Elk Mountain Road on the bottom end of this, where it reconnects back out to the highway. That's also a state maintained road. So we have several state maintained roads connecting this area. Um, way of reference, oh, this shows up. So this is community shopping, Kirby, Grace Oil is community shopping here, uh, Cracky Mountain Line, Rail Depot, CS. And then we have this R10 area of zoning. And the reason why staff recommended a conditional zoning for this project is that, one, uh, the future land use map did it. It's hard to tell, but if you zoom in, identifies this area as residential, one, as far as that. And two, that if we were to approve a rezoning, just approving a blanket CS opens up any use within community shopping, which could be, we have a Dollar General, Ingalls, a gas station, or any type of retail store, um, some sort of like auto repair shop. So that could be very incongruent with a residential neighborhood in this area. Hence the CZ. And I can go through the CZ conditions, but one of those was limiting the hours of operation and limiting the number of uses for the site because this will run with the land. So if he sells the property in two years, the same conditions would apply to the new property owner. You would have to come back before the board, like we just done, to rehear a conditional zoning, to modify, to add uses, to make the building larger, to do some other expansion or conversion. It would require this board to look at it. So it's not specifically enumerated in Exhibit D. It wouldn't be allowed. So, you know, so again, future land use map, you see, it's kind of showing, uh, red, which is commercial. The walkable mixed use is envisioned for this area leading up into Reynolds Village. That's kind of goes on up the hill. And then the R10 zoning is also congruent with the residential one. And that's kind of our most dense, more urban residential use for, uh, residential land use to go. As far as the aerial goes, again, Kirby, the highway, Grace Oil, Cracky Mountain Line. Uh, this is Asheville Technologies up here in Reynolds Village. And then you can see it's got a detached single family. It's a mixture down this area of single double wides, but there's a lot of stick-built homes in this area. So it's, there's a lot of pressure on this neighborhood, uh, because of the proximated highways. As far as a flood zone goes, there is one along Beaver Dam Creek, as we all recall here nine months ago. But that flood zone doesn't actually cross up in, uh, across the railroad tracks. It stays more down in this area. Quistilly Grace Fuel actually did not get water inside their building. It come up to their threshold in their offices, but they didn't get in their building. We walked out there and talked to them. Uh, so it gives you an idea of how high it did get. Uh, and this is.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So there, there's an existing, uh, looks like a house where they're, you're playing that.
Yeah.
Is this, um, CZ going to be building this 2,400 square foot?
Yeah.
Building in addition to that?
No, they'll be taking out this. The history of the property is, it's been kind of in foreclosure and there was a bank ownership for a while. And so it kind of got ran down and there was some, you know, the home is in very, very, very rough shape. And it's been, I think, a little bit of a problem, uh, for neighbors as far as like being kept up or, uh, accumulating trash or overgrowth. Um, probably the one neighbor we're most sensitive to is the, this Puffin Lane comes back here to, uh, a residence right here. So they're having to come across the site to get to their home. And then we have another single-family neighbor right here to the southeast off of Moore Street who are kind of backing up to the building. I'll get to site plan here next.
So there, there's an easement across the property for the house that's off to the?
Uh, my, I, I don't have a legal document, but my assumption is yes, of either implied or because they've been driving across it. I don't know. I haven't done a title search on it. And so again, reference, so you have the one home that's using the driveway here, kind of see grayed out. And then there's the other home off Moore, just for reference.
Were the, were those residents notified?
Yeah.
That they could have been here tonight kind of thing?
Yeah, we obviously, we mailed letters and then we asked the applicant to reach out and have some sort of meeting with anybody that's already owned residential. So we mailed, I'll just back up. Uh, we mail anybody that's adjacent to it. So everybody adjacent got a notice. And then we asked the applicant to meet with, uh, these three properties, either mail something or reach out and have a meeting with them. So, so you see, as you mentioned, so the existing home is in this approximate area. So the house would go away and be a new, about 2,400 square foot building in this area. And then the existing shed to remain that are kind of referenced in the conditions of up to 1,000 square feet in this area. Um, that driveway entrance off of North Woodfin Avenue onto the property. And then that would create a small parking area here, about two spaces. And then there's three, uh, parking spaces here as well as some more vehicular use area as well.
So Puffin Lane actually does.
Yeah.
Split the shed from the other part of the property.
It's just a driveway. It cuts through the property.
Okay.
It's a gravel driveway. Uh, and then a couple of other parking spaces here. So you know, there's a limit on how much. It's a gravel driveway. And then a couple other parking spaces here. So, you know, there's a limit on how much parking can be created. And then this area is identified as no impact, so it's kind of some larger trees in this area. And then, as I mentioned before, because he is rezoning, we do require that buffer strip down this east side where he abuts residential zone property. Existing trees and vegetation, which we actually encourage to be saved, would be either to plant something or identify, when we get down to the detailed technical review, we'll need to see the actual tree, but we would require trees or shrubs in this area.
So the, the buffer will come all the way down the side and then all the way across the bottom?
Yeah.
Even though it's not shown right now?
Yeah, it's, they were just calling out because this area is devoid right now. It's kind of denuded. So we want to make sure it's fairly clear to these property owners that this is going to be planted. So absent, specifically Sean, it's still required. So even though it may be omitted, I'm still going to require it unless this zoning changes for some reason. So, so like I said, so I think, again, the only modification we'll have on here as far as the site goes is just, again, the LED because we don't have very updated standards. All our lights are required to be dark sky, full cut off, so we-
That requirement is staying, right?
That, that, that's, that's standard. That's standard.
A lot of this is now putting up, and even within Woodfin, I see they have LED lights, but they're on an angle like floodlights and they're lighting up the whole-
Yeah, if we, we, there's some existing businesses that have those, but we are trying to work with some of those, you know.
There's some that are added that-
Yeah, if there's something that's added, you notice, please let me know. Marie and I'll know. We'll, we'll go out and check it, check it out. There, there's sometimes a disconnect with some electrician, especially if it's just a one light going on the side of a building. We need to know. It's harder to identify that during this time of year with a 9:00, 9:30 dusk. It becomes a little bit more obvious as we approach, you know, we're moving back down toward winter now. We've already crossed that point. When we start having five o'clock darks, then we start noticing that more. So just let me know if you see that, if you observe that. Do I need to flip? Do y'all want to look it over the, flip over to Exhibit D conditions? Do y'all want to look at those?
Yeah, the applicant is here, correct?
He is.
Okay, so I want to hear from applicant as well.
Yeah, we'll get him up here, but I just wanted to-
These are, these are standard conditions for this, for the CZ in a, from residential?
Well, we, we create, we create, we worked with the applicant to try to create some conditions.
Okay.
There, there's some, there's some, there's always some boilerplate ones, like how long it's valid for, or the site specific for approval, but, or includes setbacks, but we'll add things like, like in this case, I'm limiting the uses on the project. So, of course, we'll work through them here real quick. So again, number one is just identifying the parcel, what we're going to CS CZ. We're limiting the uses to a seven to nine, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Saturday, and then 12:00 noon to 8:00 PM on Sunday. And just, we start there, try to keep some flexibility for his operations. So if workers show up outside the normal business hours to do some work, we don't have to issue a notice of violation. So we're not trying to be too hard on the applicant, but also trying to protect the neighbor so that they don't have an overnight use that's, like I said, a restaurant, a lot of smells, or tattoo shop, you know, it's operating late.
And I don't think it was mentioned tonight in case the board goes, no, this is a landscaping business.
Yeah.
So, and they'll be held to just strictly landscaping forever and ever now.
And so number four, as far as the uses I put on here, and we can talk through these, a daycare center I added, a medical office, office and personal services, and then the proposed use of landscaping lawn maintenance operation. And if any retail sale should be incidental accessory to. So I'm thinking personal service. I'm thinking like, that could be a massage therapist. It could be a hair salon. Just trying to think of things that would be a destination use and not something that would just attract people driving by. Could be a tax accountant, could be an attorney, again, medical office, if-
Medical office, so that would require more additional parking space.
It could, yes, so-
Would they automatically be grandfathered? They have to come back in?
So the parking, the site plan we have, if they needed more parking, they'd have to come back here and modify it. So if somebody was a specialty concierge medical and had very little, you know, very targeted appointments, maybe they could. Maybe it's a chiropractic office. But if it's like a general family practitioner, yes, you're correct, there's not enough parking, but if they're modifying the site plan to add more parking, he needs more parking, got to come back before this board to do that, to change that VUA area.
And is handicap, I'm sorry, is handicap parking required in this too?
The building code will require handicap parking. And so that's typically always an all-weather surface concrete, you know, that's-
So even for landscaping lawn?
If you have a public business, you, anytime you have a public parking lot, you have-
Okay, so if it goes from landscaping to a medical office, then we have-
It's, yeah, and the number of ADA spaces is based on the how large the parking lot is. So it's typically one van accessible space for like the first 25 or 30 parking spaces. And then after that, you go to a conventional like five-foot aisle. But the building code drives that. That's why we're silent in the zoning code because the building code is always evolving, and I've worked in jurisdiction, we're zoning, and we were incongruent at times on the thresholds. So we just stay out of it.
So, so I guess, it was point number 19, but in general, on a CZ, we're, we're making these valid for two years, at which point they need to come back and just kind of get it recertified?
No, so he, what it means here is he has two years to act on that.
I see.
So if he gets it approved, that zoning stays active. He needs to submit zoning plans, submit stormwater plans, begin the building permit application process. If he does act within the two years, then those building plans will then kind of take precedent to carry the ball forward. If he does nothing for two years, then technically the CZ has expired, and we need to start the process to rezone the property back to an appropriate zoning district, whatever we have at that time.
Okay, that, that answers then my question.
So they have-
Defining, you know, I, I was thinking that if their plan is to have a landscaping company, then what's the need to go and predict other possible uses? Because there probably won't be any.
Yeah.
For the foreseeable future. And if there are, then I would assume that the CZ goes away and then we start over anyway. But I don't know, is there, is there duration for, you know, or is that why we need to make sure we cover some bases, you know, maybe, you know, not, not that this would happen, but if he decided to, you know, close the business and then go create something new or sell the property, does CZ stays with it then at that point?
Yeah, the, the CZ stays valid basically in perpetuity. So until either one, the two things, either one, he comes back, the new property owner, the property owner comes forward to the board with a new site plan, new use, what have you, before this board. Or if for some reason the town rezoned the whole area to community shopping, cause things changed so radically over the past 10 years, and we just said, okay, everything's community shopping or highway business, we could one-sided just obliterate all the CZs in that area because we said that's no longer applicable. The, the circumstances for protecting adjacent property owners is not needed.
So in five years, if the landscaping business sells the building, a tattoo person can't go in there without coming back to us?
Well-
Well, and because that's what's listed.
Personal services, so yeah, potentially, but they would be restricted. They couldn't operate all night. They'd have to stop at 9:00 PM. So if the tattoo shop wanted to operate till midnight on Friday night, the answer is no, and that would be a zoning violation.
That makes sense.
So-
Can you scroll back up to that?
Yeah.
Listening, because does anybody on the board have concern? Because I'm a little concerned with the medical one. I mean, we can have them removed, correct? We don't have to have all those possible things?
Well, so, again, back to, it's a voluntary condition, so the applicant has to agree to them. So, but if you're un- not comfortable with those uses, this is where you kind of get to a point where it's like, if he's not agreeable and we're not agreeable, we don't have to move forward with a approving the rezoning. Because it is, you know, we're, we're, we're taking, in this case, we're having to modify our future land use map from residential to commercial, so we're making a change on that plan, and we're rezoning initially from R10 to CS. So I tried to build in some uses. I, I thought medical, but if that's something that makes everybody uncomfortable, I tried to enumerate the most.
Daycare ones, and I have a little bit of a-
Yeah.
Because to the neighborhood, that is a lot different than-
Yeah.
Landscape. Landscape is probably going to be pretty much a family and some employees.
Yeah, and, and so if we want to, we can, as, I don't want to dominate, leave the applicant out of the conversation and see if Jeff would like to see what he thinks about the uses, or if we need to kind of work through a little bit more specific prescribed uses instead of my general category from the use table of office, personal services, if there's things that y'all are concerned about. Because I just tried to make it, I didn't want to hammer him, put him in too tight of a corner, because every time he would change from landscaping, we'd be back before the board. So I didn't want to make it a, a real estate nightmare for a real estate agent. We're having to shop out every use that comes through every time.
Rest of the board, what do you feel about the, the daycare and the medical office? They're the two I had a little concern with. Are, are you guys okay with this, or?
I think the daycare, fortunately, from a traffic standpoint, there would be more cars involved with that. So that, that might be something we want to look at.
How many, how many parking spots would there be at this building? To me, that's the question. Being landscaping, like you-
Only is only talking four.
Four, four, four or five, right?
Yeah, let me go back to the pair of the site plan.
And well, in a small business-
Yeah, there's two up here. There's three over here. There's five, six, seven. There's about seven on here, and then there's a little bit of a-
Overflow.
Although, so seven.
I, my thought is that, you know, consider, consider where, where it is. With, if you go back to the aerial view that showed, where you can see Kirby, for example, yeah, that one there. I mean, pretty much anything that you put there is, is going to be a welcome sight versus what's across the street. And, and it's, to be honest with you, it almost fits with, if it did end up with something medical, there's, there's dentist offices and things like that right up across the, the way at Reynolds Village by YMC. So it, it just seems to fit the area to let it have, you know, if it ended up as a little medical office or something, I, I don't see any issue with it, but I mean, I hear-
That's what I'm asking.
I don't, I don't have any issue with it.
The daycare would bring a lot more people and a lot more traffic and employees and everything like that. It wouldn't be as quiet. I mean, landscapers pretty much, I would think, would come in, go out for the day, and then come back.
Yeah, that's pretty much the nature of the use wise.
So I don't have any objections at all with that part of it. I guess I'm just a little questioning the medical office and the daycare, and, but I'm asking the board's opinion if you guys think it's good.
And, and we do have the applicant, so I've been kind of having this conversation. You, we've kind of been ignoring the applicant, and I think there might be some neighbors here. I don't know if they have questions. So I don't want to have this one-sided conversation. Maybe, and maybe that might solve some problems if I shut up, so. And so you want to start with the applicant first?
Have the applicant come up and state your name?
Jeff Young. Yeah, I, my intentions when I bought this property, you know, property is pretty expensive around Asheville, so I was like, I'm, you know, I've been renting. I'm like, I live in North Asheville. My intention is to leave the property as much as possible as it is. And you're correct, the hours of operation would be, we come in at eight o'clock in the morning, we load up, eight-ish, we're gone. Do we need to come back during the day to, oh, we got to grab some tools or some equipment or materials, or a mower broke down, so we need to drop it off? Sure. But typically, it's on the front end, you know, eight, eight-thirty, nine o'clock, and we come back at the end of the day, drop our stuff off, go home. There's currently nine people in my business. I go sometimes to the shop that where I'm currently located, but, you know, people come and park, and there's maybe a max of five cars. And there may be a trailer or two that would be adjacent or would be parked next to the building, but, again, where the house that Ricky alluded to that's currently there, it's basically dilapidated, falling in. So we don't intend to change, there's a lot of trees that, if you're facing, facing Kirby from the property, there's a lot of trees. It's a very wooded lot, and our intentions are to keep that that way. There's only one tree that we feel we need to take down, and that's near where the building would go. Everything else, we want to, you know, we want to utilize the parking in front of that shed that's kind of separated by that driveway, and then a couple spaces, as Ricky alluded to, near the building. But our intentions are to be, you know, good neighbors to anybody in the community. We're not looking to, I mean, all I want to do is run a business out of there and make it feasible to do that.
So I'm gonna just ask this question. You're not going to be bringing trees and woodchipping trees there and everything like that?
Oh, you mean like woodchips and material like that? I mean, sometimes we'll bring, I will-
Not bringing material back. I mean, you're not going to have wood chippers running to chip up all the trees and debris, where the neighbors are going to hear all that all day long?
No, no, sir. I mean, we typically, depending on what projects we're on and what we have lined up, we may bring brush back to the property. I have a TracO, I have a Dingo. So we might load up brush into a truck and haul it to landfill, but we're not going to be running a chipper or anything like that, you know, all day long or even at all.
Okay.
That's not, that's not our intention.
Are you, are you a commercial landscaper or residential or both?
Both, yes, sir.
What's the name of your company?
French Broad Lawn and Landscaping.
Would you have any objections if we removed some of the future uses?
No, I mean, I, I mean, I, no, I, I understand your concerns. I mean, I plan on being in business for a while. I mean, I, none of us know what 10 years from now brings, but I don't want to. That's the whole purpose was to buy this property where it's something that I could have and run my business out of and, you know.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
No. I guess Ricky, if we can have you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ricky?
Jeff, don't step away. So you're, you're thinking about eliminating the daycare and the medical office?
Well, I'm still asking for, what do we, do we?
Are, are there public comment on this? Are there neighbors that?
There might be, but I wanted to see if we, if we want to do that, he can, he needs to be agreed.
Get this out of the way first.
Yeah.
Well, I, okay, I, I was maybe wanted to hear input from them to see if that, if they had any.
Okay.
Just to hear their concerns.
If you want to, we can do that too. I just didn't know if it was something the board had, okay.
Let's, change a little direction. Let's, I don't have any names signed up, but-
There was, we didn't have a name, but I, they-
We do have a question.
But, okay.
Okay, so can you come up to the thing? Do you have to come up to the podium and state your name and address, please, for the record?
No, Kathy Hubner. We own 35 Moore Street, so we wouldn't be the immediate neighbor right behind. They're right in front of us. But we sit up right behind them, so we view this property from our front porch. This is our retirement home. It's a half acre. Well, we really appreciate you coming in and improving what's there. It is the old sheriff's house. It's like kind of a creepy looking place. So anything you can do would be improvement. We've heard wonderful things about Jeff, and I believe he has talked to the neighbors on the end and the people, the gauge, gauges that are right behind. So if they're all good with that-
Are you the house, are you the house kind of at the bottom?
Yes.
At the property?
Right, yeah, Moore Street.
Okay.
So we're a single lane road. There's only five residents on Moore Street.
Are you like right, right in there?
That's us.
Right here, okay.
That's our half.
Okay.
And our original concern was because even getting out of Moore Street right now, we do have Kirby. We also have all the recycling going on there, and there's a waste station at the Kirby. So we have a lot of traffic. We have the single lane bridge. We were concerned he might be having a lot of big landscaping vehicles coming in and out, trucks, chippers, as you mentioned. I think what he said was very reasonable. It can only be an improvement, and, and it sounds like you've really thought this through and for the neighborhood. However, the thought of having anything more a daycare, because we're retired, our front porch is as big as this whole area. We live on it, and it's very peaceful. We see all the Reynolds Mountain. Even though the freeway runs beside our house, it's still very private up there and beautiful. We see all of Reynolds Mountain, even though the freeway runs beside our house, it's still very private up there and, and beautiful. So I like the fact that you are putting the condition that anything, if Jeff ever sold, would have to go and be approved. You know, daycare would be really noisy and there would be a lot more activity. It's a very dangerous road, Brookdale, you have to be very careful. There is no sidewalks, it's all rutted from the trucks. You can get run off the road very easily. Just getting in and out of Moore Street, we have to look both ways. We go down and cut the brush ourselves, because the road isn't maintained for, for visual to go left or right. So that's what we have to say. If the rest of the neighbors, they're not here, they must have already discussed this with you, so we're good with that. But boy, hopefully, nothing more than that and not too much more trucks in and out. For, there is only ten residential homes, believe it or not, from Weaverville Highway to through Brookdale. And the rest is mobile home parks and commercial. So we're a dying breed up there. Most people don't even know there are five homes back there on Moore Street, little, it's so, used to be a wagon trail, it's a single lane home road. But we do pretty good, us five neighbors up there, holding on to our little half acres. So thank you, and Jeff, we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
So I'll flip back over to the exhibit D conditions.
Oh, it sounds like. Oh, yeah, we can close public comment, yeah.
And. All right, so we're going to officially close the, to the public.
All right, Jeff, let's come back.
Ask the applicant to come back up again.
All right.
And we got our.
And I agree, you know, so now I said, I did want to hear that first. That helps me understand, you know, we're, we are moving a property from a residential.
To a commercial.
And that's, you know, with the neighbors, that's a valid concern, and, and it should be a small business. I think special services makes sense, that's things like hair salon or something.
Maybe we, yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong, if another owner comes in, they can come back in and request.
Yes, yes.
But we just. Same process. So tonight, we can limit to what uses are going to go there in the future.
Yes.
Well, based upon the conditions. But it's not deadlocked. I mean, it could change if they came back and we agreed to it.
Correct. Yeah, there's always opportunity for a property owner, just like we, again, we have just heard the previous CZ, they come back and ask for modifications, and that, that's the current property owner in that case.
So they were the two big ones that jumped out at me, so I mean, what's everybody think?
I'm with you.
Yeah. So where's that line again?
I'm right here beside of it.
Okay, daycare, medical office. So an office building, do we let that one go too, or do we pull that one out too? Cause by office, does that mean you're going to have fifty employees coming in? I mean, the personal service we agree with, and the landscaping lawn service we have no problem with. Does this side of the board, I haven't heard much from you, what do you think?
I think we should do away with the daycare center.
Okay.
For sure.
So you want to work through that one one by one and just double turn with the applicant?
Yeah, so I think it's across the board, pretty much. Jerry, what do you think? The daycare center or you have?
Well, you're looking at a daycare center, are you going to put a label on them? You have a small daycare center or a medium or a large?
That does, it's not stated here, so I mean, they, they can come back in in the future and say, hey, we'll put a daycare center, we could talk about them.
I would take it out, I don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
Take it out.
Okay, so daycare is.
I'd say just ask the applicant if he's willing to take it out, so if he's.
Would you be objected to that?
Yes, I think to Ricky's comment earlier, he was giving me more, you know, and then he's going to trim back, but yeah, I don't have any issues with that at all.
How about medical office? And I'm, I'm saying that's kind of the same thing, I mean.
Yeah, I think without, without knowing what the thing, the project is, could be, I think it's safer to keep them out.
All right. And how about just general office? It's, it's very broad, so we could take it out. Personal services, I don't think we have to really change that, because you, the town has a list of what personal services are, correct?
It's going to be like haircuts and massage therapy, they're going to be like, more like appointment-based services.
Yeah. So I think the board would like, so would you be, have any objections to removing the office and the medical office from there?
I, I don't have any problem with the medical office. I mean, the office, again, like what Ricky was saying about if it was a personal service, I, I don't want to increase traffic flow on there, but are you objecting to, like Ricky said, if it was somebody that had a hair salon and had.
Personal services were good.
You're good.
By office, we mean more of a, the way I'm looking at it, it could be a business complex, business office, so.
Oh, yes, sir, yeah, I don't, I don't.
If it's a, an attorney who just has customers come in once and, well, that's, that'd be personal services.
That'd be an office, we would call that an office.
Have an office?
Yeah.
So then can we put an office and limit it?
We probably have to work through that, and, and the thing is too, I'll say about the office, if somebody wanted a bigger office, if they got to expand the parking lot, that would be a modification of the site plan. So we would say, so if somebody only needed, you know, the five or seven parking spots that you have, and they could work within that, then we'd be okay with keeping that or working via.
If we worded an office that maintains the existing parking areas?
Yeah, if you wanted to limit.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
So that kind of limits it, it's not like a big office?
Yeah.
I mean, you're, how many square feet is this?
Twenty-four hundred.
That's a pretty good size, square foot, so they could put a lot of offices in that building. And that's my concern, it's, what's little now can grow real big. So if we can limit it to the existing parking, if they want to change it, they can come back in and ask us. So the board agree with all those couple of things?
I do.
And has the applicant agree with that?
Yes, sir, and I would comment on the twenty-four hundred, that's probably, I mean, again, it may be smaller than that, that's just what I'm, again.
But you're up to, well, you could do what you want.
Right, but yeah, yes, sir, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, I'll update the conditions for council, just make sure we'll make a motion when, if we, we're moving toward approval that we delete daycare center and medical office, is what I'm hearing. And then we're limiting parking, additional parking, I need to change number six, parking is limited to within the spaces shown on number six. I just need to change it from the existing VUA to just limited to the parking as shown.
Okay. It's not meant to restrict you in any way, shape or form, it's future uses.
Yeah, yeah, we, all right, so we'll just need to make sure we get that. So personal services were good, and office uses in general, without that, if an office use would be, I'm just saying this again to the board, so I'll make sure I understand, like an attorney, some sort of destination accountant, not the general like sales office where there's twenty-five people coming in and out.
Yeah, I mean, in theory, if you called it an office, you could have a, what do you call it? The people will call you all the time.
Yeah.
So let the call list.
Slizzard, yeah.
And you could have thirty people coming in.
And we have that broad for that sense, because it works very well for Marie and I when measuring, when you're talking about Weaverville Road, it makes perfect sense. That's part of the reason we have the CZ is to have this discussion. So, all right.
Thank you.
Maybe we could put the word small in front of it, just called small office.
Yeah, but it still doesn't change what that, but that's fine. I think if we can limit the parking, we can work backwards from that. All right, all right, I'll, I'll get that updated. With that, is there any other questions of staff? All right, I'll get back down here, so, damn modification.
Do you want to have any more discussions amongst the board, or we, we're happy with the way we're having set up now?
I'm pretty good.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have volunteer.
All right, so just, if I can get this thing to move.
All right. Ricky, in the motion, do we have to include these two, three changes or?
Yeah, that would be where it's in blue, number one and number two. So I'd say number one is to modify elimination of medical and daycare centers from condition number four, and modify condition number six to limit parking to that shown on the site plan. And, yeah.
I move to approve the conditional zoning of point nine-two acres as shown on exhibits A and E from R10 residential district, R10 to community shopping, conditional zone, CSCZ, subject to the conditions identified in the exhibit D project conditions and the following additional conditions to modify number four, uses to remove the medical office and child daycare items, and number six, to limit the use of parking spaces to the existing configuration, and to, to amend the Woodfin Together land use map for areas identified at exhibit B from residential one to commercial, and find that the request is reasonable in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, uses the future land use map to guide development decisions and while protecting land and buildings for small and large-scale employment uses. Two, promotes long-term fiscal responsibility by encouraging growth in areas existing services over other areas. Three, balances the supply of land for housing and development, I'm sorry, housing and employment, and protects land for economic development and supports small businesses and ensures an adequate supply of appropriately located and sized employment space. And four, makes government decision-making accessible and transparent to all residents.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. All the board. Mr. Valentine.
Approve.
Mr. Deroni.
Approve.
Mr. Hopkins.
Approve.
Mr. Vehon. Mr. Hayes approved. Congratulations, unanimously approved.
All right, and this, and of course, we schedule about a month to have out, so it should be about August nineteenth for town council. We'll re-notify everybody adjacent, I'll update the sign at the road. Since you're not adjacent, we won't be mailing you a letter, but you're welcome to come to the meeting again, just, just see what happens. All right, and that was the last item for tonight.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, all favor?
Aye.
Meeting closed.
And Marie will let us know when we're offline.